All right, let us move to Agenda Item. Let's see. This is Agenda Item 6.1, Science of Reading. And welcome to Professors Fossen and Reitzel. Great to have you with us. I think I can probably turn this to Vice Chair Earl. Did you want to run this part? Do you want me to do it?
I can. We just had a request from board members to just periodically be able to touch base with our panel on literacy and the science of reading. And we had board members, we made a request several weeks ago to submit some questions. We had a number of those questions get submitted. We, board members have gotten some of that feedback already. And maybe we'll just let them kind of talk about what they want to talk about, answer the questions they want to answer. We're going to, we are going to try to stick to about 30 minutes. And, and then, you know, at a certain point, if we, if there's extra time from the questions they were asked, if there's extra time, we'll allow some additional questions. But where everybody was allowed to submit their questions a couple of times actually prior to this, we'll probably stick pretty close to that format. So anyways.
Let me just welcome Janice Dole. I didn't see you, Janice, up there. And we have two more. I want to make sure we welcome everybody. I saw Patty Montgomery and.
Okay.
Right on. Thank you all for joining us. Sorry I didn't catch you up front. Back to you.
Yep, we'll go ahead and turn the, I don't know who wants to start for us. And then just give us your name and a little background. Do you have a spokesperson? Go ahead and hit the, hit the button. So we appreciate you being willing to come and share what you're seeing. Who's, who do you want to start? Okay, can you, yeah.
Maybe Parker Fossen. Maybe we could start by asking if there's additional clarification. Obviously, we, we were very brief in our responses to your two sets of questions earlier this week, and we want to make sure we're addressing the questions you have as a board. Are there deeper dives that you'd like to take on any of those questions? And that may help us know which direction to go for, for the sake of time.
I think we can open it to board members. I know Vice Chair Earl had discussed with you all. I guess I could ask.
Oh, sorry. And what's the?
Asking whether we have additional questions framed up from us or from board members. We could open it up or just if you had some guiding questions.
Yeah, we, well, I, I don't know if there's, you guys were sent some questions. I don't know if there's some of those that stand out to you that you, you feel like really are ones that, because those came to us, the responses, but also just this is kind of a public thing, so. Okay, and, and share some of what's taken place since we've actually started implementing this bill. So, okay.
So probably on the implementation side, Dr. Thoransson would be the, the best one to, to respond to that question. Let me just say that the, the board, the, the Science of Reading Expert Panel was established in SB 127 as a consultation to USBE. So our, our purpose and these kinds of conversations are really valuable as, as SOR experts. We're hoping to give you the kind of information that you need as a policy body to make decisions and provide guidance on implementation.
All right, so just show us, maybe share with us some of the things that you've been doing in the field specifically with certain districts and what, what kind of improvements you've seen. I know, for example, you've been working with Logan School District and how some of their rollout and some of the implementation and how it's helped improve. I know they're elementary grade with kindergarten. There's been some incredible things happen there. And what, what are the successes you're seeing and how did the science of reading and these other initiatives help with that?
We received from Jed Grunich, who is the Director of Elementary Education in Logan's School District about a week ago, their data from 2024. And I have it here in front of me. They track a lot of data in addition to that which is tracked by our current assessment regime, which is Akadience. They're tracking such data as how many upper and lowercase letters their kinders can, can read, how many sounds they know related to those letters, how many words they can read or blend, how many high-frequency words they know, how many they can write, how many CBC words the kids can write, CBC meaning consonant, vowel consonant, how many high-frequency words of their list of 25 for Kinder they're doing, and how many sentences kids can write in terms of prompts given to them, picture prompts. On the, on most of these data, the, as I'm looking at the data now for 2024, they're topping out on almost all these goals that they've, they've set. They've got 98% of their kindergarteners able to read all uppercase letters and 97%, and we could go on through that. But if you were to draw a line through the center of this, most of the lines are above 80% in Kinder. If we go to, and I also, I also have a chart of the average performance levels of, of the kids, like on letters, it's 26. You can't get better than that. There's no, no headroom to grow. So if you look at, if you look at first grade, for example, their, their percent proficient, they're, they're looking at how many kids can read 45 consonant-vowel consonant nonsense words in a minute. They've got 37 as their percent proficient on that goal, 90% proficient on their high-frequency words, 64% proficient on their words read in a single minute in accuracy, 57%. Anyway, they, they're all up. Most of the gains are 10 or 15 points higher than last year in first grade. Sure. And second grade looks the same. I'll just say that they're up about the same in most cases. Their Akadience over time, Blues way up. I could just show you one example of Kinder. If you can see this, you can see how the lines are just diverging like this.
Yeah.
The Blues, Blue proficiencies are way up and the, the Reds, Greens, and Yellows are way down.
So if I can, if I can just interrupt, this is, I mean, it's fantastic data what we're seeing here. Where, where are we pulling it from? I mean, are you just, you're like, hey, you, you and you are amazing teachers. You're going to give me the data? Or is this like a random?
This is every kid, this is every kid in the district across the grade levels, across the schools, across K3.
And what district are you pulling from?
Logan City School District.
Logan, thank you. I think you said that already. Okay.
Okay, it's an intercity school district with a lot of multilingual students and quite a few students living below the poverty line, as measured by federal typical measures like free lunches and reduced lunches. And then I'd like to just share what he, he gave me at the end on Akadience growth. For K2, this is across the district, every school, every kid, 19% of the kids are above, well above average, 41% are above average, 38% are average, with only 0.8% below or well below average. So every kid except for 1% in the district is performing at average or above or well above. In K2.
I just, I, I just want to point out one question if I could, please. This is Jan Dole. And the, this wonderful work that Ray is talking about is what Parker and Ray are doing as part of the Center for the School of the Future, but it isn't part of what the expert panel is doing. Jennifer, as part of the USBE staff, implements the program. And so really what Ray is talking about are personal consultations that they have done. But for instance, Elsa and Patty and I have not been involved in those. So I just want to make that clear.
Yeah, that's absolutely correct, Jan. Those are some data we know about because we've been working closely with this district for two years now. So any other data that we can lay up before the board would be great to show.
Okay. Natalie, you have a question?
Yes, so I'm, I'm listening to all of the statistics and obviously there will always be statistics to cite around, in this area, because this is what little kids do, that, like a main focus of their learning when they're in these younger grades. And so my, you know, we've been, they've been learning sounds and letters and words and reading and writing and working on reading fluency and nonsense words with Akadience. They've been doing all of these metrics for over two decades. I want to know what is, what are they doing differently now since Science of Reading was implemented than what they were doing before?
Okay.
What are they doing differently?
Okay. We have a hand up. I am, is it, I don't see a name. Is that Angela? Patty, Patty, you've got your hand up. I don't know if you want to respond and then if there's something more to add to what the question was. You'll have to unmute.
Yes, I was just going to talk about more data, add on to what Ray's saying, but it is what Jan said. It's consulting that I've been doing in Davis. And two of the schools that we have been working with, one of them is now in the 70s. It started out in about the 40s and 50s in similar measures that what Ray was speaking to. And another one of our schools is in the 90s that had previously been in the 70s. So we too are seeing the same sorts of outcomes that Ray was speaking to. So I just wanted to add that.
Thank you.
Can I follow up?
Just a second. Let's see if anybody else has a response to your original question.
We also have data from Wasatch County, from their school district. We have some data from schools in Alpine District. We have, you know, it's, it's really, really great what we're seeing as we implement more and more of the science of reading in classrooms across the state. We're seeing magnificent increases in, in student growth. Alpine School District just last week celebrated one of the kindergarten schools of the six we're working with there as making the largest single-year growth in the history of the district. They went from 45% proficiency to 84% in a single year.
Thank you. And, and maybe piggybacking just a little bit off of what Natalie had just asked, what are, what are some of the practices you're seeing that are, that are enriching or being improved upon that are making that difference or that we're seeing from what previously we were doing in reading to what we're doing now? So just piggybacking on that, and then I think Natalie might have had another question. So go ahead. Is there someone that wants to answer that? Well, I've got panel questions.
I'll take it. Here's what they're doing differently in the schools that we're working with. They're teaching letters and sounds much more explicitly. It had been more what we would say was activity-based as far as how we teach. They're looking at data to know what words or letters and sounds students know. The instruction is much more explicit. It follows a much more clear scope and sequence. We have been working with the leaders so that they can provide feedback to the teachers. So it's more small group instruction, differentiated small group instruction based exactly on what students needs, more clear whole group instruction. So those are some of the things that I would say are making a big difference, more progress monitoring of students so that we can see that they are growing along the way instead of waiting until benchmarks that we can intervene if they're not growing. So those are some of the big ideas, what is different?
Thank you. Additional comments?
May I continue?
Hold on just a minute. Go ahead.
Yes, so in the first document, the first question document that you sent to us and responded to, we put a, an image in that document for you titled "The Scarborough's Reading Rope." And so in, in response to that question, what we're seeing is much more, much more depth in teacher knowledge and practice around phonological awareness. This is the ability to hear sounds and especially individual sounds. In spoken language, we're also seeing much more expertise in a teacher's understanding of the elements of decoding. This includes the alphabet as well as syllable patterns that are, have high utility. We also see expertise developing in these schools around their ability to recognize and, and teach kids high-frequency sight words. What we're trying to get more of is on the top left of that image, the language comprehension piece, and this is still developing, but it's an important part of the goal to reach that 70% in the state by third grade. And that is, you know, how do we animate students' background knowledge? And if it's missing related to content they're reading, how do we develop that? We also want to increase capacity around a teacher's ability to reinforce key vocabulary and help students know which words are going to be critical and what their meanings are in their reading. We also want them to know something about language structures and morphemic analysis. What are the meaningful units within words? And then being able to put that together to reach the, kind of the flow of that, that weaving of the, the strands into, into the rope, which is really the ultimate goal, which is reading comprehension. We want students coming out of third grade being able to decode, but also to bring information into the text and then ultimately be able to understand what they're reading.
Board Member Klein, you had an additional question, and then we had Board Member Bogus, I think.
Well, I have, I have a lot of questions, but I'm trying to understand, you know, Akadience has been around for decades now. We've been doing these things. So I'm trying to understand what's so bright and shiny and new about the approaches being done now versus what was, what's been being done? What is the difference between what is being done now and what has been done in the recent past? And what, I'm looking for practical examples of what it looks like in the classroom, what kind of tools are required and, and in practice, how are these methods different from the past methods that they've been using in the, say, last 10 to 15 years? I just need a very clear picture of what is different in what they're actually doing in the classroom. Not just what they're doing, but what's different.
Okay, and I think we do have an answer for that, or at least some more information. Go ahead. I'm trying to remember the name. I just don't, is it Angela? Oh my goodness, Elsa, my apologies, I should have wrote these down.
You know, that's okay. Well, I think you heard from our esteemed colleagues, number one, first of all, it's the teacher knowledge about knowing what to do, when to do, why you do, and how you do. And I think it's the how you do. It's that implementation and the implementation science. Number two, being more purposeful about using data to treat, to treat, to treat. That's what we were looking for. Number three, as you heard Dr. Ray mention, you heard him say that also the multilingual population is making those gains as well. And then you heard Parker talk about that top of the rope, the language comprehension. And that is the most challenging. So great gains in these skills and understanding the why behind the what, building the infrastructure that you have in the schools on how you look at data, because before the data was received but not clearly analyzed and used to design instruction. And now our leaders in the schools are understanding that and our teachers understanding that, that that data drives instruction. And now we get to the trickiest part about how do you bring in for students that live in poverty, that didn't have the background knowledge and the experiences, you know, how do we bring them in to really have the background knowledge that they need, those vocabulary, and using those, what we call metamorphological awareness, knowing how words work and how the syntax works, to get to the ultimate goal? And the ultimate goal is comprehension. So what you see is more direct, explicit cumulative instruction, more teacher knowledge, more purposeful, and really trying to meet the needs of all students.
Board Member Bogus, did you, oh, Board Member Bogus, do you have a question?
Yes, ma'am, I do, but I, I know this is an ongoing conversation. I'm happy, I'm happy to wait.
Okay.
So I'll just add something, and Elsa, that was so well put. But in contrast to what Elsa was talking about, what we have in the past, what happened in the last 15, 10, 15 years ago, is that teachers didn't pay that much attention to phonics. Now, yes, they taught letters and they taught their sounds, but they didn't do this, what we have talked about as explicitly instructing. It was just more haphazard. Some teachers use programs that did not have the kind of knowledge and the kind of information that, that teachers need now. They needed them then too, but they didn't have them. So the programs are different. We look at research very differently. And what we're really trying to do is to take the research we have and translate it into practice so it gets in classrooms. Because I think you all know what typically what happens is that research is like 20 hot, 20 years, or instruction in the classroom is 20 years behind the research. We're trying to narrow that gap so the research goes into practice much more quickly. And to do that, we're going to have to up our game. And that's really what everyone has been talking about, is these changes.
Okay. Did Board Member Bogus, you didn't have a comment then, or you wanted to ask a question?
Well, I do have a question. I just didn't want to interrupt the flow of the conversation.
Okay.
But if there, if that is finished, I'm happy to ask.
It looks like.
I'm, I have some follow-up, but at some point.
Okay, we're going to, we have a little over about 10 to 15 minutes or so, but we're going to try to get those, spread it around just a little bit. Do you want to, Board Member Bogus, are you wanting to ask something now, or would you like another person? Okay, we're going to, is it okay if we ask Board Member Green? She, she said this kind of accompanies a conversation that's going on right now. Is that all right with you?
Yeah, that's fine. And you can come back to me. Thank you.
Okay, go ahead, Board Member Green.
This is actually, one of the things I, I wanted to talk about for a minute is taking the research that we know about SOR and then translating that into the classrooms. So it's no secret, one of my concerns that I've, I've kept kind of at the front of the conversation that I've had about this is that my biggest fear is that we, we get our big shiny gold stickers and it opens up a, you know, a multi-billion dollar industry that everybody kind of runs to the races and slaps a sticker on curriculum. And then in 20 years, we're like, well, why didn't that work? So what I want to keep in this conversation and, you know, these quarterly meetings, are we actively applying the research that you know and apply and translating that into the classrooms? And that comes through like the two main ways is one, teaching and building that, the capacity in our teachers. But that's going to come with making sure that the training that our teachers are being given actually aligns to that research. And then the second thing is, I don't know if it's curriculum, and maybe you can direct, give us a language that we would need to make sure that, you know, those gold stickers are, are actually being vetted through what your research tells you works. For example, what you're seeing in the Logan City School District, we, we want to build that type of capacity in all of our, in, in every single level of engagement that we have around this to meet our goal. So do you know if we are doing that? Is there any other ways that we could? What are quality checks to do that? Can you offer us any feedback?
Go ahead, someone.
A lot of questions.
I thought I'd just get them all out.
Thank you.
Let's take it one at a time. Let's start at the top. You, you're asking about curriculum materials versus programs. These are all terms we, we use a lot in the profession and they have very distinctive meanings. And sometimes they get muddled. So if you're asking the question, what is the impact of adopting a new program that has a shiny new sticker on it? Most of these programs that are out there, at least for Tier One instruction and the large core programs, have not been adequately field-tested. They are based on research but not field-tested for their impact on students. Now that's just, you know, that, that would take a lot of time and money. And I can tell you, having been an author of a number of these programs in the past, the research does not always win in the debates on whether these programs contain the research or don't contain the research. Very often, what I've experienced is we give the research advice to the companies that produce these materials, and that is then vetted through their marketing division. Okay? And their marketing division will often win the battle. Okay? So that's, that's the reality behind, I mean, that's the, that's the Wizard of Oz behind the curtain. Okay? So we're going to have to.
The mic turned up.
From many years of research. We also know from many years of research dating back all the way to the Becoming a Nation of Readers report issued in 1985, that changing a program in a school district often does not yield the anticipated results. What the synthesized research indicated at that time and moving forward is that the achievement moves about 3% based on a new program adopted, one way or the other, up or down, depending on the efficacy of the program and the way it's built. Many people want to rely on programs and at a surface level, they, they, they produce the illusion of cohesion and unity. But at the level of classroom practice, you have to understand these big programs are built to sell across the nation and they're built to market to Texas and Florida and California and everywhere else. So in the process, what happens is they get just loaded with everything in the kitchen sink in there. And teachers then have the obligation to teach from those programs because so much money has been put into them. And at that point, what occurs is teachers are making choices about what they can or cannot select out of the lessons in order to get through the curriculum in a year. And that's, that's where the illusion falls apart. And at the very ground root level, teachers are picking things in and out of the lessons and we have no real idea how they're doing it or why they're doing it. And so that's why I say it's, it's elusive, you know, to, to think that adopting a program is going to get you unified results in, at the level of the classroom. Teachers are forced by the very nature of the materials they get because of the volume of stuff that's put in there to have to pick and choose. And we have no idea how that's happening. So I hope that's not too truthful a statement, but I, I mean, I feel like I'm sort of under oath here and, and I better give the truth, even though I'm an author of such programs.
Okay. Chair Moss? Yeah. Oh, Chair Moss had a comment or a question?
Member Green, did you have a follow-up or you want me to take it? Yeah?
Can you put your microphone on, please?
Then how do we, how can we follow as a board? And what are better questions that we can ask as we follow this, that the research is translating into the, into the classrooms and that the capacity is building, is getting built at a state level? System-wide.
Yeah, so this is a great, this is a great question. I think the best advice we can give the board is follow the data. You know, if Tier One instruction in reading is functioning as it should, we should see 80% of the students being captured in, in that instruction. 80% of the students being captured in, in that instruction. In the schools that we're engaged with, we're seeing that happen, and in fact, it's up around probably 85% of the students are being captured in Tier One instruction. And then you move instruction to, for the students who aren't quite there into Tier Two, and your goal then is to capture those students at grade level by the end of the year. So, as you look at data, be looking at, are we, is our, are our systems effective in Tier One at capturing 80% of the students? And then in Tier Two, in follow-up instruction and intervention, are we picking up at least another 15% of those students in Tier Two? You're usually gonna have about five, two and three. You're usually gonna have about 5% of the students. When all the systems are functioning as they should and aligned with what we know works, you'll have about 5% who really fall outside of that and are, are an ongoing opportunity for us to engage with. And then also, keep in mind that, that you get, teachers account for approximately 30% of the variance in student academic learning. Programs account for about 3% of that variance. So, get your, get your horses hooked to the right wagon on what you're gonna track because it's the teacher effect that's producing the outcome, not what program they're, they're purchasing. And so, as you track those data and you see issues, one of the, one of the key elements designated in SB 127 was to build capacity, and there's a reason for that. We get the biggest effect from building capacity in the people within the system, and then making sure they know how to access materials and supports that actually align with what they know about how to teach reading effectively. It's easy to get caught up in, in systems of this size on tracking inputs, and that's important to do because the inputs have to align with what we know from the research. But if, if those inputs aren't producing the targeted goal, then you have to look at inputs again and say, okay, what do we need to tweak on that to make sure that we hit those targets? And we do have the capacity. We have the knowledge to do that, and I think we're seeing that in certain, certain sites around the state, that as teachers and, and school leaders gain deeper capacity around the science of reading, they're actually better understanding how to animate successfully all of the resources they have access to to benefit student learning.
I'd also like to say, this is Jan, and I also want to say, as a board, really, the best way you could do this is to look at what happens with the cadence and rise as we get towards the end of the year, and look at those scores. And the scores will tell us what we need to know. So, you look at the state level, what does the state level say? And what's gonna, you'll see, well, the state will give you your average, right? And then you have to look at each district, and you have to see which districts, like what Ray and Parker are working with, what Patty's working with, there are certain districts that are doing really well. And then target those districts that are not doing so well with more professional development, more help, more support. That's the only way that we're gonna raise everybody up and not just individual districts.
Can I go?
Yeah, Chair Moss, go ahead. And then we have, we have two more que, Kristen already asked hers, right? Did you ask yours? So, Kristen, Chair Moss, then we will probably be at the end. So, if there's additional questions, we can always move on. So, go ahead, Chair Moss.
Okay. I've enjoyed learning, my backyard, as you know, is Wasatch, so I've, I've seen up, up close some of what you've done up there. I'm also curious, as I watched, and I think some, a lot of us have, have seen this, those, some of us are experts, some of us like me are not. And, and as I've gone to conferences and other things, there was a very vigorous, I think vigorous is an understatement, for the effort that went in to turn the corner from methods that weren't working to methods that were working. I remember names being called out at national conferences like I had never heard before. People banished to Siberia for, I mean, it was, like I say, vigorous, I think, was an understatement, right? And, and so, as, as the science of reading and phonics has come in, I'm curious, that, that took a lot in the research and the expert space and the policy space, what stands in the way of getting this to the end of, of the row? You know, there, there are folks who are doing it and some kids who are not getting the advantage of that. Are there barriers that the board should be looking at? We've heard professional development, you know, building capacity in teachers, but is there anything else that kind of gets in the way of, I referenced the prior turning of the corner because there were just some mindset issues, there might be structural barriers, I don't know. But what are you seeing out there that we should be addressing to make sure every kid gets the advantage of what's now sort of understood to be solid research?
So, I'd like to share something so that you're very aware of this. It's a kind of national, and I'm, you know, ashamed to tell you, this barrier actually comes from the multilingual community, from the multi, from national organizations of the multilingual community, as well as state organizations, who are setting forth a myth that the science of reading and all the studies did not include multilingual learners. And that's very problematic. We've had, you know, these national forums, and when in fact, so what that does is it confuses your teachers, because your teachers are hearing from their own multilingual community that what we're trying to tell them in the science of reading never included English learners, and that that research had only been done out of this country. When in fact, we have national reports from the National Institute of Human Development, we have them from the National Academies of Sciences, Engineering, and Medicine, and from the Institute for Education Sciences, the research. And so, I just want to say, we've been working on this for 30 years. And so, what it does is it confuses your teachers. And I don't know for sure, you know, I'm not on the ground there in Utah, but I know from across the country, that's very confusing to teachers when you were trying to push forward, you know, this science of reading and this implementation, and when they're hearing the noise of, oh, but not for this group of kids. And so, when, you know, Ray and Parker are telling you, oh, but, you know, we included these children, and these children are actually making the progress, that's the kind of thing. So, you know, there's still, it, it's not as settled as you think it is. That's what I want to tell you.
Anything else in the way of barriers?
Okay.
I have a question.
Oh, hang on, I think Dr. Reitzel might have been.
I, I just want to hitchhike a little what Jan brought up. I think the most important thing that we can do here locally is to track the data for progress, the outcome data. I mean, while inputs are important, if they don't affect the outcome, then they're not important. And I think we have to own that idea. If the out, if the outcomes are moving like we want them to move toward the state's goal, then we're happy. What we, the other thing too, is to look for system effects. There's random effects everywhere. This teacher, that teacher, this room, that room. But when you start seeing it spread across entire schools and into, across entire districts, then you start to, you should start to look deeply into those places and say, what are you doing to get the different effects than, you know, just the ones we see here and there? And so, I think that would be helpful for you to, to spend a little time in. I can't overemphasize, and Jan should be saying this, not me, because she's the one that always says it. I can't overemphasize the importance of leadership commitment and coaching competence. We can help with the research because what science of reading is, is this massive body of research on how people learn to read, and then there's this smaller body of research called science of reading instruction that is, you know, drawn out of various populations, and they should be appropriately applied. If they were done in classrooms, then that research is applicable to classrooms. If it's been done in a clinic, you know, with, with a few dyslexic students, that may not always be applicable to an entire classroom of kids or multilingual learners. So, what we've got to do is we're gonna have to get in the weeds here in the data, just like we tell our teachers to do with their kids, and find out what's working, what's not working, and start concerning ourselves more about, you know, how the outcomes are looking and less, you know, what we're, and, and I think the districts that are really doing well, their leadership is thoroughly committed to this, their coaches are thoroughly committed to diving into the data, and really looking carefully at what's happening, and looking for those effects across schools and across classrooms and grades. So, that would be one of the things that, you know, policy-wise, we have to, we have to know, leadership matters, and support matters, but in the end, it's what are the effects? And if we aren't getting the effects, then any good experimental researcher will start, you know, looking at tweaking things to get the effects you want.
Thank you.
Okay, Kristen, I'll take a question from you.
Thank you. Well, I see things from a fifth grade point of view because I'm a fifth grade teacher. And my district, while they are all in, are, they're, those students aren't quite yet to fifth grade, but I do spend many of my lunch hours in the K-3 classrooms watching this, and it's amazing. It is amazing. One of the things I haven't heard a lot of talk about though, and getting down into the data either now or in the future, is as the students are developing this, you know, vast background of phonics knowledge, I am seeing them sounding out how to spell words. And I am by no means a person who thinks that spelling tests or all that, but I do see in fifth grade, where we have such an emphasis on writing, that those students that are confident in their spelling are better writers. They're just more free with their writing and they're not so constrained. What types of data are you seeing on the, the, the written language from the science of reading and the skills that these students are developing?
So, if you look again at the, the figure that we provided to you in the first set of questions, it doesn't really address the writing piece, but there's a, a growing evidence base in how to effectively teach writing. And we know, for example, the ample, the, the historical pathway we've taken with writing in schools has been the writing process. The effect size of the writing process was, process was .32, was it? 34, .34. So, this is, this is below the minimum threshold to accelerate student learning. So, we're not, if, if that's the process we're using, we're not using the process that produces, produces growth. If you look at Stephen Graham's meta-analysis and his work and his colleagues' work on self, self-regulated strategy development in writing, the effect size is 1.32. So, four times the size of the impact, yeah, of the impact of writer's workshops. So, we're in the process of trying to help teachers start to think about this. Decoding gets you part of the way to, to the end game, but you've also got to pay attention to the writing piece, the language comprehension piece, and then the reading comprehension piece. And those are all pieces that are critical, and, and much of that, much of that comes in small doses in those early grades and then accelerates as we start to move through the, the grade levels. We're trying to move that further down in the system a bit so we get more effects by the time those students get to you in fifth grade.
Thank you. That's just wonderful.
Okay. Christina, we'll take one last question from you, if you have one.
Thank you. May I ask any more questions when she's done, please?
Well, we. Board Member Klein, I'll probably have to, we'll probably have to get answered and then sent around to everyone because we're already over 15 minutes. We're not, but Board Member Bogus, did you have a question?
Yes, ma'am. So, my question to the panel is, the co-opting. I, I work in schools, I have a lot of endorsements, and that, that only just means that I'm exposed to all of the propaganda that comes in and the trainings that are within my district on these things. And what has been articulated in the space and place of the board as, put it in quotation marks, "the science of reading," is not what's in my inbox. And so, I, I get very concerned, and I articulate that obviously then in these meetings, that what I'm seeing in my inbox is not what's being articulated to us. And I'm wondering if there's a, a pathway, a process, whatever, to either address the fact that we've got some nefarious faux programs, or to differentiate from the, the fakers, if you will. Could you please help me understand that better? Or are these people part of the science of reading and is it heading in a new direction?
Yeah, probably, at least my perspective, this may be different for others, probably not. We'd probably have to see what the inbox is to be able to help you with that and, and know what's coming your way. But there are certainly things that we know, and we can, we can use that as an initial filter. And then, back to what we said earlier, watch the outcome. If the outcome isn't being produced, there's something wrong with the input and the inbox.
I also want to add that maybe we're overemphasizing the science of reading in terms of the educational community when the reading wars are still going on. And it's, I, I wish it was the end of the reading wars, but it really isn't. And so, that could be part of what you're seeing. There are a group of people, a body of people, who don't buy the science of research, and they believe in more philosophy than they do in science. They have a philosophy that if you just get, get kids to love reading, if you just give them the right kind of literature, they will automatically do this on their own. We know from research that that's not true, but that doesn't mean that, that we have 100% agreement within the community. And that's, that's a long-range problem that we still haven't resolved yet.
Any last comments from the panel before we go?
I would love to make another comment.
Board Member Klein, we're gonna, if you would mind just sending yours in, we're gonna let the panel finish, so we can finish, we have a number of items we've got to finish today. So, and we'll, we're happy to, if you can send those in, we'll happy to send it on the panel and then send it around to those responses again to board members. So, thank you. Go ahead, if you want to finish.
Maybe just on behalf of the panel, let me just thank the board for inviting us to have this conversation with you. This is certainly what our role was specified to do in the bill. We want to give you access to high-level expertise around this topic and look forward to many more conversations. And please feel free to reach out to us between these formal meetings. If questions arise, we're happy to respond to those as they come through.
Okay, thank you very much. We appreciate your attendance today and coming to visit us.
Thank you so much.
And we look forward to hearing you, from you down the future again. So, thank you.